Call the meeting order, this is a common council meeting of Tuesday, January 6, 2015. Roll call.
Aldrin Kirkowski is excused. Aldrin Bekavich.
Here.
Ritz?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Guzekowski?
Here.
Fledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Item three is the approval of minutes of December 16, 2014.
Bekavich will make a motion to approve the minutes of December 16, 2014, as listed.
Yo, sorry.
Ritz will second. Ritz seconds, roll call.
Aldrin Ritz?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Item four is a recognition resolution. It's number 11579-010615. It's a resolution of appreciation to Jack G. Wren on his retirement. I'm actually going to read this one. Jack's not here, I don't believe, but Jack's been a great employee for 25 years, over 25 years in the fire department, and I think he deserves that recognition. So, this is a resolution of commendation to Jack G. Wren. Whereas Jack G. Wren will be retiring from his position as Fire Lieutenant effective December 31, 2014, after 25 years and three months of dedicated full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas Jack G. Wren was appointed a firefighter on September 25, 1989, and promoted to lieutenant on January 17, 2008. Whereas during his years of service, Jack G. Wren has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. Whereas Jack G. Wren has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin, and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who are sick or injured, always delivering care and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas Jack G. Wren became a firefighter paramedic in May of 2003. And whereas Jack G. Wren responded to many major alarms utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue and dedication without hesitation. Whereas Jack G. Wren was a plank owner, original founding member of the Oak Creek Tactical Emergency Support, TEMS, unit which formed in 2005, and he continued as a member until 2012. Whereas Jack G. Wren was a member of the Department Self-Contented Breathing Apparatus Program and exercised great care and diligence in maintaining his vital safety equipment to ensure the safety of our firefighters. And whereas Jack G. Wren was in charge of radio communications for the department for many years. And whereas Jack G. Wren received the Medal of Valor Award on May 4, 2004, for his efforts in containing a fire and allowing time for other responders to rescue trapped occupants of the Lake Forest Department complex. And whereas Jack G. Wren was a member and later led the Oak Creek Fire Department's Honor Guard. This Honor Guard has been recognized for ceremonial performances and presentations at sporting and community events. Now therefore it be resolved by the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Jack G. Wren for his many years of dedicated and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Fire Department. That the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Jack and his family on his retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Jack G. Wren. Pass and adopt to the sixth day of January 2015. The chief is here, do you have any additional comments?
The only thing is to add, we couldn't get it all on one page. One more thing to add is Jack and I, we kind of, he started with me when I was lieutenant, he was a firefighter. In his very first year, we had a number of fires, but one of the major calls that we have still today is one of the largest personal injury cases in the state of Wisconsin history, and that was the Matthew Brown electrocution. And Jack was on that call with a group of us. So, just to add one more for Jack's long list, and he's going to be sorely missed by the department.
Thanks, chief. Just need a motion in a second.
Gail will move to approve Resolution 11579-010615, resolution of appreciation to Jack G. Wren.
Here's the call, Gail's second.
Roll call.
Aldrin Tillman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bekavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Moving into public hearings, item five is a public hearing, a request by Timothy Wallen, MLG PF Oak Creek, to rezonate a portion of the properties at 3110, 3260, and 3300 East Elm Road from A1 Agricultural to RS2 Single Family Residential in the 4th District. And Catherine will read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Timothy Wallen, MLG PF Oak Creek LLC, to rezonate a portion of the properties at 3110, 3260, and 3300 East Elm Road from A-1 Ag Agricultural to RS2 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Timothy Wallen, MLG PF Oak Creek LLC. The property owner is Oak Creek Land Investment LLC. There follows the legal description. The date of the notice is December 4, 2014.
Doug Seymour?
Thank you, good evening. My name is Doug Seymour, I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And this is a public hearing and a request to rezonate portions of the property at 3110, 3260, and 3300 East Elm Road from A1, which is Limited Agricultural, to RS2 Single Family Residential. And the properties themselves are shown on the screen, though it's important to note that the rezoning and the legal description only affects a portion of those properties, and that's what I'll put up there right now. You can see that the rezoning request is only for the area which is highlighted in the black dotted line at the northern portion of the property. Again, only those portions highlighted are proposed for rezoning at this point in time, and that really encompasses Phase 1 of the subdivision, or a potential subdivision at that location. The potential first phase would consist of 15 building lots, and one outlot for stormwater purposes on a cul-de-sac on a southerly extension of Ricky Drive. As the overall development would progress, there would be additional rezoning requests to be submitted for the remainder of the property. The applicant has provided a conceptual subdivision plot, which you see on your screen, which is also included as part of your packets in support of this rezoning request. Now according to the land use map and the adopted comprehensive plan, this area has been identified for single-family residential development. And there are pockets of resource protection areas, mostly on the southern part of the property, we can see some of the wetlands come into play in this area here, as well as the northeast corner of the property. So, the requested rezoning for RS2 Single Family Residential is consistent with the adopted future land use map and comprehensive plan. And that's important, because the reason why the state has mandated that communities adopt comprehensive plans is that so the land use decisions that the councils or the plant commissions make are consistent with those plans. So, the plan was adopted, I believe, in 2002, shows this area for single-family residential. The proposal, the proposed rezoning, is consistent with that future land use map. We do have representatives of the developers here available to answer any questions, and I would ask that they make a statement as part of the opening statement prior to the public comment period being open. The plant commission has reviewed this request, and they have determined that the proposed rezon is appropriate for the area, and they have recommended that the common council approve the proposed rezoning. With that in mind, this is a public hearing, once the applicant has made their statement, the mayor will open up the public hearing, he'll call for three times for public comment. At that point in time, I would ask that anyone who is interested in making comments or questions, please address the podium, give your name and address, proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. We also do have a resident who wishes to make a brief PowerPoint presentation to you, which we will also do as part of the comment period. So with that in mind, I will ask, just give your name and address and proceed to address the council.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Joe Bukovic with Point Real Estate, 13400 Bishop's Lane, Brookfield, Wisconsin. And we're here representing MLG PF Oak Creek LLC, who owns the property, and who is petitioning to rezonate just a portion of the property that Mr. Seymour had described, where it's going to be rezoned from A1 Agriculture to RS2 Single Family, which is 17,000 square foot minimum lots with 100-foot average width at the setback, which is consistent with the neighborhood to the north. The decision to propose just a cul-de-sac development by itself is really based on the market and the cost to develop the lots. Right now, for the last eight years or so, the market's been used to buying properties back from banks at distressed prices, cheaper than what they can be developed new for. And in order to make a successful development, we have to find a property that has, to bridge the gap between the bank pricing and some higher-end development cost properties. And you do that by finding properties where the roads extended to the property, the sewer and the water are extended to the properties. And in this particular piece is, about three years ago or so, we did a study for M&amp;I Bank, based on the plans that were brought in from a previous developer for the property, where they had kind of a horseshoe road from Elm going through the center and back down to Elm, with one road going back up, I've got a pointer here actually. The old design kind of came through like this, down and around, and then there was one stub going back up to Oakwood Lake Estates. And we did a study on that for the cost, just to put in the sewer, the water, the grading, and that was at just over $50,000 a lot. And right now, over the last year, a property's sold in Oak Creek under a half acre in size, and they range from $45,000 to $84,000, with an average price of just over $68,000. And two years ago, the average price was $74.6. So, from a market standpoint, it shows that developing the whole property at this point isn't feasible from a market standpoint. When the market starts turning around, we'll be coming back in to come in with some of the additional conceptual plans and rezoning for the remainder of the property, but we're just here tonight talking about the rezoning of the property to the north. And the development that was proposed years ago had a through-road. You can kind of see that this is the west half of the property, where it comes in off of Elm, came back up here, and there was an agreement with the city that there would be a gate placed, and there were a chain of some kinds to stop access for the connection. And what we thought would make the solution permanent by proposing a 15-lot cul-de-sac at the end of that, so there wouldn't be any chance of any future taking the gate down or removing anything, this is a permanent solution forever, that there wouldn't be any additional traffic other than those 15 lots for that development. And the stormwater, one of the concerns that were raised at the plant commission meeting was stormwater. And we have a pre-development, Bob, if you want to bring up a pre-development. The area of the redesign, or the cul-de-sac, is 9.75 acres, and... This is a pre-development map, this is showing where the existing drainage is going to, and that was prepared by Belinski's engineers years ago. You'll see that this area, right here, is very consistent with this area, and this shows that 9.8 acres flows to the north. There's a storm sewer that runs through here, and based on our pond that would go in this area, we'd be able to connect into that storm sewer pipe, public storm sewer pipe. It will flow into the lake after it's been detained, cleaned, and the flow's been reduced. I guess, is there any questions at this point? I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
Why don't we open the public hearing, and I know that the residents either selected, or there's a resident that has a short PowerPoint presentation, we'll have him come up, and then anyone else that wishes to speak.
Thank you.
I don't know if you've been elected to make this presentation, or you're just doing it on your own, or...
My name is Doug Crimmer, 3170 East Lindy Lane. I am a vice president of the Oakwood Lake Estates Homeowners Association. And been selected to be the major presenter, although there will be further comments from other residents.
Yeah, and I just keep it as brief as possible, because there may be other people that want to speak.
This presentation's an attempt to keep that as short as possible. So, our position statement for the proposed Elm Road property subdivision rezoning in connection with Oakwood Lake Estate. Voice of the community, Oakwood Lake Estate taxpayers are not opposed to the Elm Road property being rezoned and residential. As Doug said, that has been the plan, we've known that's a plan. We're not opposed to that becoming residential. But what we do oppose is having this new subdivision connect with our subdivision. There are several main reasons why we oppose that. The design of our neighborhood is not conducive to any additional homes and traffic. We have safety concerns as the subdivision stands currently, and additional traffic would also aggravate the situation. And as Joe said, we also are looking, we have some stormwater issues not just in Oakwood Lake Estates, but on the whole southeast section of Oak Creek. And we would like to see those issues be brought forward in resolution, be discussed, and see if something can be taken care of. So, safety and design. Oakwood Lake Estates, if you're not familiar with it, we don't have any sidewalks. We don't have any streetlights. The streetlights are basically the house lights in the yard. We have over 100 minors that currently live in our neighborhood, ranging from all ages. Our subdivision has a detention pond in the center, so it's a circular oval layout, which as you go around the four corners, there's reduced vision areas. Because we don't have the sidewalks, we have culverts that are very deep. And we have had issues in the past with traffic. We had a school bus accident in '06, where a school bus on a day similar to today came around the corner and had to bail into the ditch, into a deep ditch. We've also had numerous issues with near misses and safety issues along those lines. Oakwood Lake Estates, we already have safety issues. So, by adding any future homes that would have to come through our subdivision would only make things even worse. It would aggravate stuff. We currently have 83 houses in our neighborhood, and residents from the proposed cul-de-sac will have to travel through Oakwood Lake Estates to get anywhere, to school, grocery shopping, gas, freeway. So, it's guaranteed that every one of these houses will have to have, so it's guaranteed additional traffic. The road width of our neighborhood reduces down to one-way traffic when vehicles are parked on the side of the road. I know that it matches all of the design standards, but due to the fact that we have rounded corners, as well as the deep culverts, when a car parks, it can't park off of the road. It can only park a little bit off the road, and it severely chokes down our traffic. We've had numerous, countless near misses in our neighborhood that, whether it's you coming around a corner, somebody's walking their dog, and there's a car coming, and you have to stop, slow down, and wait, and go around. We've had residents that have had their driver's side mirror taken off overnight for some unknown reason.
That's not unique to Oakwood Lake Estates.
What's that?
That's not unique to Oakwood Lake Estates.
The, and in fact, yesterday, I had almost lost it in the ditch myself when a snowpaw was coming around the corner, and he or she had to get around a mailbox, so right when I was passing, they pulled out, and I had a near miss myself yesterday morning, woke me up. Any way you look at it, adding 15 houses, or actually 13 houses to meet codes, would have a 20% increase in traffic. And that will only accentuate our design issues and our safety concerns, and it'll further compromise the safety of our residents. I mean, we're a pretty tight-knit subdivision, we have lots of children, lots of dogs, lots of people walking, and the circular nature actually is a benefit for that, because it's like a track. So, as in the past, when Belinski wanted to develop the property to the south, we worked with them, and our resolution was that we came up with a tangential connection that honors the neighborhood's interface, that the common council approves in 2008, and that this compromise satisfied the developer, Oakwood Lake Estates, and the city.
Are you talking about the gated connection?
The gated connection, correct. Point Real Estate's proposal, if you reverse that cul-de-sac and you put it tangential to Ricky Lane, they still can access to water and sewer, so there's no additional, it's not like they have to bring water and sewer from Elm Road in order to do that. And the only real additional cost would be to take their construction, which wasn't on the proposal, but they're going to have to build a construction road coming off of Elm. So there would be an additional cost to cap that construction road with asphalt, so that it would be usable until phases, future phases come forward. As they stated, they're going to develop the rest of the property, so they could come up with a plan with which would utilize that construction road, or not, tear it up and put in their final road, and then actually come off of Elm Road when conditions in the markets improve. The other issue is our stormwater in the southeastern side of Oak Creek. Our pond has been designed to drain out onto Oakwood Road at any levels of higher than 85 foot, that's the normal level. All of the report that was filed in 1994, all the calculations start at 85 foot when they're figuring out what the levels will be. In actuality, I measured the height of the lake on the 30th of December, 2014, and it is actually at 85.9 feet. Now, .9 feet doesn't really sound like that much, but when you're talking to lake, I think it's the cross-sectional areas in the report that I utilized, it's 2.75 million gallons of water that are being stored right now, today. And if we remember, this fall, it wasn't a wet fall, we haven't had a lot of snow that's melted, this is kind of a normal level right now. And so that .9 foot is already lost before any rain even starts coming down. So, you know, in the past, we've had issues back in 2008, and I think it was 2010 when we had those significant rain events. We've tried to work with the city, and in fact, there was a hump taken out down the flow, and that did make a definite improvement for a while, but it's creeping back up. But the root cause of the elevated water needs to be understood and corrected. And by developing more properties in southeastern Oak Creek, we need to understand what's going on, because we may be even making it worse. And there's pictures at the end, which we'll skip by, but they're in the report and what I emailed everybody. But the proposed lots, as I stand, were, whenever we get any significant rain, right where those lots are going is where the water sits. There was actually in 2001, an additional drain line put in back right off of Ricky Lane that connects down into the storm sewer, just to try and alleviate it. However, it's clogged and it's not working, having issues trying to find it, I believe. So, and also, because we're only talking about rezoning this certain area, there is a greater audience of people that this will impact, anybody else along Elm Road and Oakwood in between. So, as we go forward, we feel that more people should be communicated, what's going on. So a resolution related to the stormwater is, right now, it's at what I would consider a stage zero condition, and needs to be taken into consideration before preliminary plans are approved for future development, because we're .9 foot above that. There's a lot of complicated stuff, and we have started discussions with the engineering department restarted, and we've had a couple of real good conversations that we'll continue to work through. But because of the issues down in the southeastern part of Oak Creek, the whole Elm Road property should really have a grading and drainage plan before, not this stage, but in the next stage goes forward. And potentially, you know, we may need to size their detention ponds to keep all of that water on the property, instead of spilling into Oakwood Lake Estates, and then take that out to Elm Road at the current conditions that there are today. And then after that, we just have a couple. So there's, that's the dead end of Ricky Drive, you can see the water back there, the lake, we'll call that Elm Road Lake. This is along Oakwood Road, just to the east of Oakwood Lake Estates.
When was the picture taken?
This picture was taken in 2010, during the, it was a 100-year event at that point, when that had occurred. But the next picture, you can see, I wouldn't want to live there. And we had this situation in several lots in Oakwood Lake Estates on the lakeside, as well as, if anybody on the outside of the lake had similar issues, I'm sure they'll let you know. But basically, from my calculations, the high level in 2010 was over 89 foot, .3, whereas the report basically is a foot less than that. Imagine that.
Are you an engineer?
I'm a mechanical engineer by degree, yes.
Couldn't tell.
So, at this point, that's what I have.
Appreciate the brevity. Second call for public comment on item number five. A woman who gave up her, one day of her vacation to be here.
I did, I'm leaving at 6 o'clock tomorrow morning. My name is Valerie Kay, I own the property at 3200 East Lindy Lane. My concern is my house, Ricky Lane dead ends into my house. My driveway lines up exactly with the driveway, or the road on Ricky Lane. So I have a variety of concerns. One is getting in and out of my driveway. I will be backing up into an intersection. There's a bus stop right in front of my house, where, because we do not have sidewalks, all the kids wait in the street for the bus, and that's been moved several times, and for safety reasons, has always been moved back to Ricky Lane, because again, cars can't go in two directions on that street. But when the cars would be at that stop sign, if Ricky Lane does open up, those lights shine right into my two bedrooms and into my living room. And I tried a variety of different ways to, by having a car parked there, to see how it affects my house, and there's really no way to get around it. So with those 15 houses that they're going to build, that's constant traffic, and going into my two bedrooms and into my living room. The other thing too is, my house is on the lake, and I am concerned if they open up that road to cars, I'm concerned about children coming in from the other subdivision, because we do allow fishing in our subdivision, I'm worried about people cutting through my yard, which I do have a sidewalk that goes back to the lake, that they will cut through my yard to have lake access. The common lot that we currently have in our subdivision is way on the other side, and I really do not see anybody, especially if they're children, walking all the way around to the other side. They're going to cut through my yard probably, and the Crimmers' house as well. And then, as Doug Crimmer had mentioned, all the kids play in the street there, everyone walks in the street, and when there are cars that come through there, you know, they do come rather fast, and there's been a couple of close calls. So I'm very opposed to having Ricky Lane open. I have no opposition to having the gate that we once originally had discussed and was approved.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Whitman, new resident of Oakwood Lake Estates.
Welcome to Oak Creek.
Thank you. 3140 East Lindy Lane, I'm within sight of Ricky Lane. Can I ask a question of Mr. Wallen? I didn't hear before, did you say what the market value of the homes in that area were going to be?
If you're going to respond, you're going to have to come up to the mic to answer the question.
I didn't hear you say that. Did you say what they were?
For the proposed subdivision?
Yeah.
We did not say what that was going to be.
Do you know what they'll be?
They'll be in the 325 to 400 range.
Okay, thank you. I was curious about that, because I see that opening this up presents a number of burdens to the residents of Oakwood Lake Estates. I think safety is one of the largest ones. I wasn't aware of the water flow issues until the last meeting, and now living there, seeing some of these conditions. I think one of the issues could be resolved today by passing the resolution, or the rezoning, contingent on not connecting to Ricky Lane. It seems to me that the majority of the residents of Oakwood Lake Estates do not want to connect. They don't have any issues with anything else there, other than that connection, and we're concerned about the burden, the numerous burdens that's going to put on us. So, I can't help but wonder, because there are other alternatives, why that might be forced. And... And I, I realize at this point, it's not being forced on it, but it's clear by the portion that they're asking for, that that's the only option that they're looking for. So I would ask that if you do pass the rezoning, that it be contingent on not connecting to Ricky Lane. Thank you.
Hello, Steve Bouch, thirty-two sixty-four East Lindy Lane, I'm currently the president of the homeowners association here. One thing with this, the way it's, I guess, drawn here, the potential connection, I know that in the past, they talked about they were gonna have their, I guess, own association. I know the city likes connectivity with, with the communities, and when we came forth back in what is a two thousand eight, that gate, I mean, satisfied everybody's, I guess, the developer and us and the city's way of, still having connectivity, you know, with the bike path, and it's still with the fire, that they could still get through in need be with the gate. But they're having their, I guess, with that group being having their own association, I don't see with them connecting the way they are, how those people would technically have an association with the rest of their development, when they're technically gonna continue the build, since they, technically the way it's drawn, they're technically part of us, but not part of our association. I know the other lady was talking about, well, if they're gonna come between her house to go fishing, we will have to call the police on them, because it will be trespassing.
Is your position, is the owner, homeowners association's position, that you don't want them as part of your neighborhood?
Well, I, I mean, it hasn't been discussed, but our opinion, we really have nothing to gain by them being part of ours. For us, we'd have to put it to amend our covenant to actually be able to even do that.
Okay.
I mean, if they walk around the lake and they walk on the common lot, I would have to go there and tell them to leave, and if they wouldn't call the police on them. So I don't see how we could have connectivity with these people as this is actually drawn out.
Okay.
I know, I'll bring up the water issue a little bit, and I discussed this before, but.
Just one thing real quick, just keep in mind, a lot of these issues are unrelated to what we're talking about tonight, and I'm just giving you a lot of leeway, because there's so many people here, but.
Yeah.
A lot of them has, I know you think they're related, but it's not really an agenda item, so.
I see the road connecting.
Actually, do you wanna say something on it quickly, or?
Well, this, this is, thanks, thanks Mayor, this is, this is a land use decision, and, and the issue is, what's the appropriate land use? I, I, I understand, we're, you got on the screen a, a conceptual subdivision plat which shows this connection, so I understand it's hard to ignore, but the fact of the matter is that a rezoning is strictly, what's the appropriate land use? I mean, that, that is the decision for the council. And so, you know, that should be the focal point of the comments, because that's the focal point of the decision that's made by the council, is what's the appropriate land use?
Yes, question I have then is, I mean, the way it's drawn up here, what's the alternative? There is no other alternative for them to come back, but to have a connection to it. Is that correct? What might have some, I mean.
I gotta, I gotta turn.
Because they, with them rezoning that, they cannot come back with the road going to Elm unless they would actually rezonate it.
No, there's, there's.
Go ahead, Doug.
Sorry. The rezoning, the, the presence of agricultural zoning should not, and probably would not preclude the additional roadways from being constructed to service that, if that's what the plant commission chose to adopt as a preliminary plat.
All right. So I guess the answer is that it really doesn't exclude another roadway from being.
Okay. Well, they would have, so they would have, in order to put a cul-de-sac there and turn it the other direction, they would have to probably rezone a little bigger area to fit it in a different direction.
Yeah.
Before planning, I walked around, some of those board members walked around, discussing this with all the residents, and caught who was home with emails, and as a residence, as a association, I mean, we, I could say with talking to everybody, just about, we had a hundred percent of people we physically talked to, and we had not one person tell us that they would like to have this connection. So it's eighty-two homes with probably ninety-nine percent of the homes having two people living in the house with kids, so you're talking a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty people are all saying that they really are, do not want this connection. So I just wanna go on the water thing briefly, because I think it is a really big topic on this, when they talk about putting that water in, back into our pond. One of our biggest issues, I know we're gonna take that water, and one of our biggest issues is the water that backs up into us off of, off of Oakwood Road. And I know there's all these equations and stuff, and I don't really think that was in the equation initially, when they came up with this, of how much water comes back into our, into our pond. And we get an inch of rain, it's back flowing into us, we get two inches of rain, it's really going into us. And just so you understand what happens, we get two inches of rain, we should fill up, I calculated it out and passed, and it, we should come up to about, with two inches of rain, we should fill up to about six, six, six and a half inches of raise on our pond. And that's what happens, but then, for two days later, we get filled up, and it continues to fill up, so we fill up over a foot, foot and a half, when we should have only filled up, you know, that's six inches. So now, when we get another two-inch rain event in the, right away, that space that was supposed to be taken by us, we go up higher, a lot higher, so we go over the leveling effect of the city. Okay? And then, and then if it rains again, we continue to get filled up, and again, that water continually taking the space that our water should be going to the point now, and what happened in that, that year we had that flood, we were at that higher elevation, if you do that calculation, we should have never been that high.
Okay, I gotta cut you off there, because we can't go off on the stormwater, because it's unrelated to the specific agenda item that we're talking about, I get your point.
Well, the way I wanna talk, the reason I'm talking to you about it is because it's a, it's a key part of this development, when they want to dump more water.
I think we all understand your point.
Mm-hmm, okay. One, one more quick thing about the water.
Go ahead.
I know Waukesha is discussing, you know, with Oak Creek, on the, bringing, dumping the water into the road river, which technically has an impact on our flow of our water actually gonna go out.
And you're, you're speculating on something that may not ever happen.
I'm just throwing it out there that, that's, because I know I was at the meeting when they were discussing it, and, and when I asked the question after the meeting to a couple of people in the Waukesha Water, what will that do to the people that are backed up, like we are so far away? The question is, they really don't, don't know what that's gonna do, how, is it gonna take it longer for our water to actually be able to go out?
Okay.
So, okay.
All right, thanks for your comments, Steve. Mike Simmons, city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to respond to, to some of the comments on, on the stormwater. As these, as the conversation is, as the topic has become relevant, the conversation has been engaged here with engineering, took the time to refamiliarize myself with the, the stormwater report, and the, the report does count for some backflow of water through that pipe back into the pond, and the calculations reflect that, the, the release rate is still adequate, and the pond level is not at a dangerous level to affect the homes. Now, that's the report, you know, we probably should take some time and evaluate the level of that pond, I was talking at some, in some depth with, with Mr. Crimmer, and agreed that that would be something that we should probably take a look at, and, and see how, how the pond is performing, this was constructed almost twenty years ago.
Right, and we, that's, that's a great discussion to have in the future, and I've talked to the, Mr. Bouch about this many times, more than happy to have you, you know, him or all these folks come in and talk about that issue, but this is not the time or place to have that conversation. Done?
I'm gonna talk only about the zoning.
Okay.
Doug Crimmer, thirty-one seventy East Lindy Lane. I, I've neglected to bring up the other positive reason why we feel they should tangential cul-de-sac to Ricky Lane instead of coming through. As Joe had said, you know, the conditions right now aren't really that great for properties and all that, you know, the municipal code will, will really only allow them to put thirteen lots, even though they have fifteen on this preliminary layout, but if, if you change that cul-de-sac the other direction, they could start with thirteen lots, and if conditions in the market get better, they could extend it, and then they could extend it and actually grow with the market as the market recovers. So by, by going in the opposite direction, utilizing a temporary road that just capped, I mean, at some point, you know, they'll wanna come off Elm with the sewer and water, but they'll, you know, the sewer and water is at Ricky Lane for them to tap into, and, and come forward and, and as the conditions in the market warrant. So it's, you know, it's a positive thing in order, if, if they did that, they could actually expand with the market and, and, and work that way. So those are, you know, some of the things that, you know, we, we'd like to talk about with them, and we, we have not had any further, we had one meeting with them back in November, but there, there's, there's good things for it, we're not just here complaining, we're, there is better options, and that's what we would like them to look at. You know, and to echo off Mike's comments related to, you know, you, giving your opinions right now will help them come forward when they come with their preliminary plat, plan, with something that you're gonna accept. So, you know, if you have any concerns about that, and you would like to guide them in the direction of, hey, maybe it would be a good, good way to go is to not connect and tangent out with a walking path, you know, it, it would only save them time and, and effort in order to, to do that now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the move of the process, third and final call.
My name is Nick Kelly, I live at three-two-zero-seven East Lindy Lane, my lot is actually directly affected by this, if you look where that cul-de-sac would be coming out, my lot is right at the, right at the right side there. So, you know, from, I know we're talking about rezoning, but I will address safety since the way, the way this is rezoned, the entrance is at Ricky, Ricky Lane, it comes right out where my home is, I know you've heard from some other residents who live right on that mouth, but I'm looking at probably another at least thirty cars daily coming past my house, if you're looking at two cars for each of those fifteen lots. You know, if the road were to come from Elm, that would alleviate all of those issues. The board does take, I've, I've been on the, the board for almost four years, I'm a vice president, I know the city doesn't hear a lot probably about some of the safety issues we have, but we take them very seriously. We can go back and show you the minutes from our annual meetings, letters that go out to residents after those meetings, where we do talk about safety. We hear a lot about the things that go on, maybe they don't get reported to the city or the engineering department, but these things do happen quite a bit. It's, it's one of our things that we focus on, is to try to keep everybody in that subdivision safe, everybody who currently lives there is on board with that, we try to do the best we can, but it is a known, known issue that we've been dealing with, and we're trying to, to keep things as safe as we possibly can, with the traffic situation that we already have, with the fact that all the roads are curved, there's no long stretches of road in the roads, to Doug's earlier point, if you have a car on the street, you're down to one lane. That's it, I basically, you know, a lot of the other points have been covered, I just wanna strongly voice my opposition to this proposed rezoning, where the only entry is going to be on Ricky Drive, we're certainly not opposed to them building back there, but the way this is set up, with that being the only entryway, I have pretty strong feelings against it. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else before I close the public hearing?
Hi, my name is Dave Blake, my address is three-two-eight-three East James Drive, I'm on the other side of the lake, next to the common lot. The one thing that really hasn't been talked about is, this fifteen-home subdivision that's gonna be built is not part of our subdivision, but they're using the inherent value of all the houses in our subdivision to make their land more valuable. If they can't make the deal work with a road off of Elm, to me, the deal can't work. If you approve the rezoning without the road to Elm, you're giving them permission to go ahead and do that. Tell them, hey, I know this is only a rezoning thing, build all the houses you want in there, come with a plan from Elm, that is the only thing that makes sense. Belinski agreed to it, it was approved years ago, do the same thing.
Couldn't I make the same point to any developer that comes forward and wants to put a new neighborhood next to a really nice neighborhood?
Yeah.
People wanna live in certain places that are nice, that's the nature of a city.
Of course, but on something like this, they have the advantages without the responsibility.
Okay.
Our subdivision council, the association, they have very tight restrictions on what you can and can't do in the neighborhood to preserve the value of the houses, and the safety, and consistency of the water in the lake. These fifteen homes would not be held to that standard, they're their own subdivision, so we would have no control over what they do that would directly affect the lake. I, all the advantages without the responsibility, it's a bad thing. Thank you.
Thanks. There's another example, and it's Genevieve's Garden on the northeast side of the city has a similar relationship to what this could end up looking like. Sure, one more, come on up.
Mike Christopher, one-zero-four-four-six South George Drive, I know we've heard a lot about traffic safety in the subdivision, I'd ask you to vote against this rezoning due to safety concerns on Oakwood Road. Oakwood Road, I don't, I haven't seen the counters out in a long time, but change the shift at the power plant, in and out of Deerfield, summer school, Oakwood Road was just not designed for the amount of traffic it's seeing right now. I know a lot of people are using it to connect to Thirteenth with the construction on Ryan, but I'd ask you to take that into consideration with your vote tonight, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. This time, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna move to the actual aldermanic discussion, if someone has a comment that, or a question, they can certainly come, come on up. So we're gonna move to item six, which is the consideration of ordinance number two-seven-four-five, rezoning portions of the properties at thirty-one-ten, thirty-two-sixty, and thirty-three-hundred East Elm Road from A-one. Limited agricultural to RS-two, single-family residential in the fourth district, and open it up to any questions or comments from the aldermen. Alderman Bukiewicz.
I guess I'll start, when this came through planning, I was not in attendance that night on the rezone. I did send out an email on my thoughts and concerns to the plant commission at that time, my point was pretty much covered by the city attorney, at this particular time, it's a land use issue, and, and that's what we had to focus on. I understand, in my comments, I did tell the plant commission that if it does proceed, and it gets the land use granted, that we do have to look at the stormwater, the roads, the safety and all that, and for lack of a better word, you get another kick at the cat as a developer comes through here and does it. The mayor kind of alluded to their similar situations, and they popped the mind in my head in all subdivisions when this happens. I live in a subdivision currently that's about twenty-five years old, it's connected to a subdivision that might be forty years old, I'm sure these people had the same concerns when they opened up the field and rezoned it in my particular area. My road's pretty busy, I do have sidewalks and streetlights, but yet, when two cars are parked there, it's a one-lane road. It, it truly is, I have a subdivision within my district where there are no sidewalks or streetlights, that was, that was chosen not so much by the city, but with the developer, and, and to meet the needs of that subdivision. So, so it's kind of off-topic, I guess my whole point is, the city planner kind of covered it, it does meet the land use requirement, and that really should be the focus, and as we come through, this doesn't guarantee that they'll get it in, or they'll get the connection, it just means that it fits our land use plan going forward. The details yet have to be worked out, by no way, shape, or form would I consider that what we're approving tonight, but we are approving it to be a residential district somewhere down the road. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman Bukiewicz, any other questions or comments from the council? Alderman Guzikowski?
I too am on the plant commission, and I was at the meeting that night, and I wanna thank everyone that was there, that took the time to make this presentation, and everything that the city has brought forward as well. I do say that when we brought this up at the plant commission, I was opposed to it, and not opposed to the subdivision, because that's a good use for this land, and it's in the map, on our map, I am opposed to that access and how we gain access to, from one subdivision to the other, like Alderman Bukiewicz said, so that's kind of where I'm sitting right now, I, I understand this is a land use issue, but I am opposed to how they're gaining access to this property.
Alderman Gale?
Just a question for the attorney, Larry, do we have, is there any conclusions, restrictions on how the council could act on, on land use restriction or land use change requests? Is there thresholds we have to meet, or can we just up, down?
Zoning is a discretionary determination, as, as long as there's a rational basis for your decision, you have discretion to vote either way on the zoning.
Okay. As the other aldermen said, I, I look at this too as, at this, at least at this point, strictly a land use issue, Doug has said it, it does, at this point, look to meet the planned land use, obviously, as a city though, in a, in a council, we have an obligation to balance the needs of the existing subdivision, or the significant tax base that's already existing there, and the potential tax base and value of the property owned by another tax holder in the city, so that's a fine balance we've gotta work, and look to kind of find a, a common ground from, from a council standpoint. No matter which way this goes, I trust there's gonna be multiple layers of ongoing planning and discussion and engineering that are gonna come into play here, no matter what, how this subdivision moves forward, so I trust that, Mike, with your stormwater management and other engineering. So I trust that Mike, with your stormwater management and other engineering disciplines are going to have a significant say in how this eventually plays out. And Doug, from a layout standpoint, you know, we'll have to obviously examine specifically whether or not this makes the best and most use, useful sense of that particular property. Strikes to me as putting a cul-de-sac, there may not be the most productive use of that piece of land when it comes to residential planning. But from this standpoint, from my standpoint, as strictly as a land use, I don't see a reason to deny it at this point, and I trust the process will kind of flesh that out as we move forward in terms of whether or not this makes sense to do it as a subdivision the way it's currently planned.
Alderman Ritz?
Yeah, I just have a concern that you're, you're talking about an area that's going to be economically landlocked. By economically, the developer said you can't afford or it's not economically practical to move toward Elm at this point, right? So if, if we're approving the use, which I agree, it's probably a valid use of land, but we're approving it without any access to that land, at least not economically, I guess. So I don't know if I've ever run into this before where you'd be agreeing that a, a use of a land is proper, but you're not, you don't have any access. You do have access, you could do something with, with Elm, but it's not economically feasible apparently. So I'm, I'm a little, little concerned on approving a land use where you don't have access.
Doug, do you have any comments on that?
Just that as part of the normal plating process, I mean, those types of things are taken into consideration. I, I get your concern where, where you're coming from. I, I think that at this point in time, to kind of predispose yourself towards, against a certain layout, I understand that there's been a lot of discussion about a particular layout tonight, but I think that's a little bit dangerous in a, in a sense that you've got to reserve those judgments for the appropriate time.
Okay. Alderman Toman?
I've had extensive conversations with Steve Watch and Doug Kremmer on this issue, and we've went around and around and, and pros and cons were, were reviewed. And I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. That shows that the, your, your present subdivision is together. You, you have some legitimate concerns here. Moving forward, I would like to work with that, with your subdivision and the developer in context of how this is going to play out in the future, okay? Alderman Ritz just said you have a landlocked area. That's not really true. It's not a given that there could be a road constructed out to Elm. Moving forward, that could happen. And i- if there's across the board problems with this connection with your subdivision and Oakwood Lake's subdivision, I don't see this project moving forward. That's why I think it's responsibility of the residents with this connection to Ricky Drive and the developer to work together moving forward on this. And I got a question for you, Doug. As far as this connection on Ricky Drive is really part, more a part of the preliminary plat, wouldn't it be, versus this land use, which is the issue tonight, right?
It is, although I'll, I'll kind of qualify that by saying certainly the configuration of the rezoning alludes to the fact that there's a particular layout in mind. So from that standpoint, if, for example, a subdivision plat were brought forward that didn't fit this, the boundaries of this rezoning, we'd have to go through the same process of having a public hearing and that amended rezoning request.
Okay, but there is a good chance that when this, when this, if this plat would get approved, that the connection to Elm Road could happen because of, of construction equipment, correct? I mean, there, wouldn't there have to be something temporary or?
Those issues would need to be taken into account by the plan commission when they reviewed the preliminary plat, and that's not what we're doing this evening.
I understand that.
And that would be the responsibility of the plan commission for any, of the reviews of any potential subdivisions. Construction access is, is a big issue. Certainly stormwater is a huge issue wherever you're developing. Need restrictions, covenants are also within the purview of the plan commission and the common council when they review subdivision plots.
Okay. I'll, I'll just end it. I'll, I'll end it real quick here by saying I've looked over all the, all the concerns of Oakwood Lake's estates, the subdivision, and they are legitimate, but they also have one thing in common with many subdivisions in this city, one in which I live in myself, which used to be a dead-end road, a dead-end road, now connected to a Carrick subdivision that has 100 homes across the street from me that was farmland years ago. And that is, that is part of the realistic development of this city. We, we really only have two ways of, of increasing our tax base. That's to increase the taxes of the people that live here and development. Those are basically the only two ways we have. And, and given the state legislature with the rules right now, we want to increase the taxes in this city, it has to go to referendum. So development is one of our only avenues to increase the tax base to pay our bills in this city. So I, I hope, I hope you realize that, and I hope we can work together. As the Alderman and the district, I would like to see neighborhood meetings with the developer, with the residents, and get this issue resolved in the future. Thank you.
I guess to Alderman Toman's point, Doug, the rezone request, if it's approved, does not, would not say that in the future as part of this, the next phase of where we're going with this, that a, a connection to Elm Road couldn't, couldn't be part of that.
It would not preclude that.
All right. That, I think that's the big point, right? So it's still on the table. There's many steps in the process. I've been to a lot of these, I've done six years of these meetings either as an Alderman Mayor. This is one of the most committed and organized neighborhood associations there are in the city. As, as Mr. Bowd said, you get tremendous input and you talk to each other and you have email chains and all of that stuff. There's no doubt in my mind that when this, if it moves forward to the next phase, that you'll be equally as committed to finding a way to make the residents happy in the current neighborhood and make the developer happy. And I'm thinking, if I gauge the council correctly, they're interested in making sure that that's the case. We're not interested in ramming things into, just because it's easy. We could, trust me, we could develop a lot more than we develop. They don't make sense in certain places, so we don't do them. It's not our interest. But Alderman Toman makes us a key point. We can't say no to development because it's uncomfortable or because it makes 15 or 20 more cars drive down your road. That's not how cities work. If you like that lifestyle and you don't like cars, you got to move pretty far away from a, from a suburb or a city. That's just the reality of life. So I, I don't really put much stock in that. I'm sensitive to your concerns, but we're really talking about a rezoning request. Somebody raise their hand if you make a quick, you want to come up and make a quick point.
Thank you. Okay. In response to?
You have to say your name and address?
Desiree Blake, 3283 East James Drive. In regards to your question and about this is your way of being able to create a tax base and get more money, Belinski still hasn't sold all of their lots, and I'm sure that was probably that excuse as well over by Oak, by Deerfield. Who's to say that we're going to get anything from this development when that development still isn't done? And it's by a school and it's a beautiful area and they still haven't sold their lots there. And then another point about yours is regards to, you know, the 100 homes that you got. Do you have sidewalks? And do you have curbs or anything in your neighborhood?
No, and a lot of subdivisions in the city don't have that.
Now, did the development that came with yours, the new development, does it, isn't it required to have that now?
Uh, moving forward, we, we don't build them with ditches anymore. We build them, build them with sidewalks, yeah. Yeah, moving forward, yeah. This was, this was 20 years ago. We, we weren't happy with it 20 years ago either.
I know. The, the easy way to solve this too is, you know, I mean, some of the, for one, nobody likes that idea. Nobody, you can tell, but.
Except the developer.
Except the developer, yeah. And he's, he's, he's hoping that he's going to make money off of this. In this market, who knows? But anyways, so why can't, you know, if all the new development is required to have sidewalks and curbs, why can't we get that developed in our neighborhood? There are many people who would say that they would give up their entire front yard to have a sidewalk.
Well, that's another, gushing for another day. You might want to, you might want to talk to your neighbors about that. Okay, last, last comment before, and then I'll go to Alderman Gale, then we're going to cut it off.
It's Doug Kremmer. With respect, Mr. Toman, there are four other exits coming out with those 100 homes in your subdivision that, that was part of that development. So it's not actually apples to apples. We, there is a unique situation in this subdivision that we've presented tonight. And Doug, we didn't really, nobody asked questions about the municipal code that says that there's only 15 allowable lots on a cul-de-sac and whether the two existing lots on Lindy Lane would be included in those. So actually, from a municipal code standpoint, this preliminary lot layout is, is not in conformance with that.
Doug, you want to respond to that?
Sure. I mean, if, if we were reviewing the preliminary plat at this point in time, you'd be correct in saying that we would count those as meeting the 15 lot maximum.
Okay. All right. Ken, you get the last comment.
Yeah, so Doug and Steve and the rest of the folks, something we appreciate you making the effort to be here and speaking up and voicing your opinion. I think if, if this moves forward though, your next step is to be active participants at the planning commission level because that's where the, the hard decisions will be made. You can have your influence there and you can make sure the developer does the development that is going to be, you know, conducive to not only keeping the value of your property intact, but realizing the value of their property, so.
All right. So I need a motion on six and a second.
Toman will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2745 rezoning portions of the properties at 3110, 3260, and 3300 East Elm Road from A1 limited agriculture to RS2 single-family residential.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
No.
Toman?
Aye.
All right. Thanks for your comments and please stay on the issue if it concerns you or, and as it moves forwards. I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussions going forward. All right. Moving on to item seven is a condition. It's a public hearing on a conditional request by Leah Berlin, QuickTrip Inc. for a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station on the property at 7880 South 10th Street in the 2nd District. And Catherine will read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by Leah Berlin, QuickTrip Inc. for a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station on the property at 7880 South 10th Street. The applicant is Leah Berlin, QuickTrip Inc. The property owner is William F. Zimmerman. Therefore, the legal description, the date of the notice is December 4th, 2014.
And Doug?
Thank you. Again, good evening. This is a request to approve a conditional use permit that would allow for a gasoline service station at 7880 South 10th Street. The property is identified on the screen in front of you as well as, as part of your, your packets. At the, the meeting of November 25th, the plan commission did recommend a council approval of this conditional use permit which would allow for a gas station at this corner. Now, gas stations are conditional uses in the M1 Manufacturing Zoning District, which this property is zoned. Now, the proposal would be for a 6,558 square foot convenience store with five rows of gas pumps, four rows of diesel pumps, and an area for compressed natural gas, which would be controlled access. And that's, we're seeing that more, more commonly with fueling centers in the city. They are requesting 24-hour operation, 24/7 operation. In addition to their request for just the conditional use permit for the gas station, the plan commission, as is customary, reviews conditions and restrictions governing the operation of the proposed conditional use. And as part of that, QuickTrip did request some limited outdoor storage and display of retail merchandise, including a propane cage on the side of the building, two ice machines, and some other things that were earlier, I think some display of retail merchandise such as firewood and salt pellets, if I'm not mistaken. The plan commission, in their review of the conditions and restrictions, did limit those, and I believe that given the standards for development along Drexel Avenue with Drexel Town Square and really with our, the new development of our gasoline, gasoline stations, I acknowledge that there are some that are not in conformance with that right now. But the idea is to really limit the display of, of retail merchandise. You know, you're certainly welcome to have that as part of your store, as part of your, your interior retail area, but the city has taken a conscious direction towards limiting that, some of those outdoor, storage uses, outdoor display areas. And I think that especially given this location along Drexel Avenue, that it's important that we maintain those standards for, for gas stations. The conditions and restrictions again are attached if you have any questions on those. But again, the plan commission has recommended approval of this conditional use permit that would allow for a gasoline service station at this location. This is a public hearing, and I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a gasoline service station at 78, excuse me, 7880 South 10th Street, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your question or comment to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
First call for public comment. Don't talk about stormwater.
Doug Kremmer, 3170 East Lindy Lane. Doug, I just have a question about what the, you had said that compressed natural gas will be part of this? And I know that there's one other compressed natural gas in, in Oak Creek off of?
Two.
Is there two? Okay.
Three.
Three, okay. So it is getting to be more and more popular. Okay. I didn't know if there was any special consideration with, with those, because it has a compressed.
Yeah, that's right.
Versus a normal gas.
What was the question?
Are there, are there additional considerations due to the high-pressure?
Yeah. The fire department has closely reviewed those in terms of the monitoring and the design of those. And in fact, they, maybe the chief is more appropriate to speak to this, but they, they have, have taken a close look at those and have found them to be, you know, consistent with the regulations that they deal with. And that's why the city, not just Oak Creek, but in many cities. Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Second call. Third and final call for public comment on item number seven.
Question. I've been requested by a resident to read into the minutes at the public hearing a letter. Do I do that here or do I do it after we close the public hearing, Larry?
You can do it now.
I can do it now.
All right. Read it.
You can go first.
Oh, sorry. I've never done this before, but my name is Jolene Rosplack and I'm 1140 West Drexel. So I'm the, right on Drexel Avenue, I'm the second house from the right. And I'm just wondering what the need is for this gas station. Has the city done any research on that? Because when I look around, I see like Meyer now has that gas station that they're opening up, and then Woodman's has one over there, and then on Rossin Avenue, you have your BP and then you've got the Mobil. So I'm wondering what the need is.
Turn to your right, Doug Seymour.
It's really not a question of need. I mean, it's, it's really the market that drives those, whether there's a need there. The city's role in regulating land use is whether it's appropriate for the area. And given its manufacturing setting, its location in Drexel Avenue, the plan commission has found that is, or is at least recommended as appropriate for the area. Market conditions and competition are something that typically, and for good reason, that local authorities are, tend to steer away from because it's really the market that sets itself. It's not, it'd be inappropriate for the, the city to say, you know, we have too many, fill in the blank. So I think it's, it's entirely as it was, kind of like last time. It's truly a question of whether the land use is appropriate or whether the use is appropriate for the area.
And I guess, and I don't know, I don't want to verge off the subject, but my concern on Drexel Avenue, since the interchange has opened and then, and I know Drexel Town Square will add the traffic and that's fine, but my real concern is how much truck traffic comes by. And then I'm concerned with the gas station right there, if it would be, and I heard about diesel pumps, if that's going to become like a truck stop where we have these trucks coming by constantly. If anybody else lives on Drexel Avenue, you hear the thump, 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 and it's not very residential. I mean, it's just, it's noise pollution, so.
Thanks for your comments.
Yep, thanks.
All right, Alderman Bukavich, you want to read the letter, as long as it has a name and address associated with it?
Yes. It is addressed basically to Dan Bukavich, second district alderman, from David and Sandra Wilkie, eleven twenty-six West Wayland Drive. The subject is the hearing, Quick Trip, Inc. Mr. Bukavich, would you please read the following comments from my wife and I into the minutes on the hearing Tuesday, January sixth, for the request to build a Quick Trip gasoline service station on the property at seventy-eight eighty South Tenth Street. We are both strongly opposed to this project for several reasons. First, this seems like absolutely the worst place the city would allow this type of construction to occur. It doesn't conform to the intent of the type of medium-sized businesses that we have in the industrial park, which can be compatible with the adjacent residential development. This type of development is more suited for a heavy commercial area use. Second, the entrance to the large residential area at the corner of Tenth and Drexel. This is the only entrance to the area from the east, north, and for several blocks on the west side. This would create, in our viewpoint, an absolute nightmare situation for all the residents of this area. The addition of the traffic light, which probably would be suggested, would only control the nightmare. Third, what is most disappointing is that we had to find out about the project, which would have a substantial effect on this area by accidentally catching the official notice in the Oak Creek pictorial section of the journal newspaper on Thursday. They were more generous with the mailings when they were trying to sell the Drexel Town Square project. It seems like this is being run under the radar before all the people in the area could find out about it. We hope you as our aldermen will support us in this endeavor. David and Sandy Wilkie.
Thanks for reading that into record.
What was the address again? It is eleven twenty-six West Wayland Drive, and I will pass this on to the city clerk for the records.
Any last comments before we close the public hearing and move to aldermanic discussion of item number eight?
I just have one more question.
Sure, come on up.
Again, new to city politics, but I know that Mr. Kuzakowski is my alderman and I'm concerned why he wouldn't be here for a vote that directly affects me, who would be his constituent.
Every alderman's entitled to a vacation and if it falls on a certain time when something's discussed, it happens, you know?
So they're just, their vote doesn't count?
Well, it counts, but you know, we can't say, you can't ever take a vacation.
No, but I mean, I'm just so, he right now will not be voting and whatever you guys decide is.
The five other aldermen that represent the city will be making this decision.
Okay, that's what I was confused about.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now we're moving to item eight, which is absolute consideration of the ordinance, number twenty-seven forty-four, approving a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station located at seventy-eight eighty South Tenth Street in the second district. Alderman Gail.
Doug, can you just, for audience and TV, just go over how we in fact notice for public hearings?
The requirement for noticing for public hearings is within three hundred feet of the proposed property boundary and I can't say for certain whether eleven twenty-six fell within that. That's why I asked for the address. We will check it out typically, unless there's, and there have been times in the past where property ownership may change or something may change where, or the residents may have gotten the mahal along with something and may have acknowledged that. But typically, we do get coverage within three hundred feet unless it's more, or is requested by the alderperson for the district. And that's why we do advertise in multiple sources, that one being the official notices in the newspaper as well as our website.
Just for the record, it's the Oak Creek now and not the Oak Creek pictorial.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Bukavich.
I guess I'll comment on a few things. Mr. Wilkie did contact me last night by phone. Whether he's within three hundred feet, I did explain to him that that is the notification process. Willow Creek Apartments probably fall within that. They were probably notified, maybe some of the residential homes on the corner there. The second district is actually just south of Drexel Avenue, the first district being north. You know, his concerns are valid. I've heard from people, I've talked to Mike about it, a stoplight is needed at Tenth and Drexel without a doubt. We had some neighborhood meetings about a year and a half ago, two years ago, when the Rossin Bridge was being redone about the noise. We had some noise studies done. Yes, it is noisier, but it was within limits. Really, Mr. Wilkie, at this point, is the only person that contacted me with any opposition. I've talked to about half a dozen people since this went through planning within my subdivision that were pretty giddy about getting the gas station there, to tell you the truth. They were pretty happy about it. Again, as Doug mentioned, this kind of comes down to a land use situation. It really kind of fits there, whether you believe it's needed or not. It's unfortunate if your backyard or your front yard abuts Drexel Avenue. But again, Mr. Wilkie is the only one that I heard of and I'm sure there's some other residents that just either didn't get notification or didn't hear about it that don't want to see it happen either. But that being said and told, again, I've had more positive response, Quick Trip going in on that corner than I have negative since it's been outside of planning announced.
Doug?
One of the reasons we have conditional use permits is it's not something that's entitled by right on a property. And that typically points to the fact that things like a gas station do have impacts which need to be regulated by the municipality. And one of those, I mean, we can deal with issues such as if someone feels that the lighting would be excessive. You know, we can require recessed lighting in the canopies, which we have in the past.
And.
And I would certainly suggest that we do. And if we need to write those in the conditions or restrictions, I'd be happy to do that. We deal like things with paging, with signage, with outdoor storage, so that we can mitigate some of the impacts of those.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Doug, because in my conversation with Mr. Wilkie, he talked about having a giant pole sign like to attract them off the expressway, which would be non-accept, you know, wouldn't be acceptable at that particular location. Again, we don't anticipate it being a truck stop, anything like that, when we went through planning. So again, and you know, I'll just say this for the record, I know Alderman Kuzakowski isn't here and we're entitled to our vacation. He didn't express an opinion on it. I think it went out to the entire council. He was in favor of it, so just to let you know where your alderman sat on it, he wasn't absent on the issue, so he hasn't looked into it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motion on eight.
Bukavich will make a motion to adopt ordinance number two seven four four, approving a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station located at seventy-eight eighty South Tenth Street.
Ritz will second.
Roll call. Mayor, if I could. The attorney Haskins?
Yeah, I don't know if the council wants to incorporate what Doug just suggested about recessed lighting as a part of the conditional use permit.
Yes. And again, that was brought up with Mr. Wilkie about the shading.
Sounds like a good idea.
Very much so. So city clerk, if you could just go back on the minutes on whatever Doug said. And then one other correction, that's the first district, not the second.
Say again?
That's the first district, not the second.
Is it really?
Yes.
Well, yeah, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be the first district. So if we can get the second to agree to that amendment to the motion? Who's second is it? I did. All right, you agree to that? Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
What's the exact language of that recessed lighting clause?
It said, well, the lighting standards in section four will reflect that recessed lighting would be required in the canopy.
All right, thanks.
So we have no exposed light sources.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Item nine is a resolution number one one five eight zero dash zero one zero six one five. It's a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of twenty million five hundred thousand dollars of general obligation refunding bond series twenty fifteen A. City administrator?
This item is to take what has been issued as temporary bonds and convert them to permanent bonds to fund the construction of the city hall library or partially construct the city hall library and fire station. Bonds were priced today. Paul Thompson will talk a little bit about that pricing. We had, this is the last of a significant number of capital projects that the city council had conceived of back in probably two thousand nine, two thousand ten. As part of your packet, we provided the original concept and the original financing for a number of investment projects that the city was looking to make into itself. At that point, we had a lot of work to do to issue bonds and to complete these projects and I'm happy to say this is the last of those projects that convert all of those major capital expenditures into permanent financing. I passed out at your seats a colored spreadsheet on all of the bond costs, all the P and I costs and all the projects, which include the street garage, the project that we've got tonight, the city hall library fire station, the lakefront project, the Drexel Avenue construction project, where we went from the two-lane to the four-lane urban cross-section and the Drexel Interchange project. All of those are part of this program and I'm pleased to announce that we've got positive cash flow. We've identified all of our sources of revenue and we've got actually a better cash flow than we did when this was originally conceived. So we're really happy to be through this. You always worry a little bit about interest rate risk when you're issuing temporary bonds until you put those into finance, permanent financing. We now have all of these done and we have a positive cash flow. Significantly, no new property taxes for these projects. We're able to do those within existing cash flows. So this is the last of some very significant projects in the city and, you know, I think that the council was bold and I think right when decided to invest in ourselves for the future with these projects and I think it's going to pay dividends for a long time. And I think this is, from our perspective, from a staff basis, a pretty significant achievement over a fairly long period of time. Well, actually not that long. We got this stuff done in four or five years, so I think that's, you know, that's a pretty reasonable time. Paul is going to talk a little bit about the actual sale of the bonds today and the rates that we got, which I think are also consistent with the last refinancing we did just back in December.
Welcome, Paul.
Good evening. One thing I'll point out, your agenda is correct, except that during today's events, we changed the dollar amount to nineteen million, excuse me, nineteen million six hundred and fifty thousand instead of twenty million five hundred thousand. That's really the result of pricing the bonds, generating some excess cash, what will happen at closing. And I gave a letter to each of your places and explains in the letter that at closing, an additional eight hundred and fifty thousand of what we call a premium will be delivered to the city. So in combination with the nineteen million six hundred and fifty, you'll have twenty million five hundred thousand of cash to repay the outstanding loan. So the borrowing for tonight is actually nineteen million six hundred and fifty thousand. It's at an interest rate of three point one percent. And as you can see in the attachment to the letter, the debt payments go out to two thousand and thirty-four, so it's a relatively long financing at a fairly attractive interest rate. I think we would all be happy if we could finance something out to two thousand thirty-four at slightly over three percent. As Jerry mentioned, the cash flow for the utility aid and all the projects is now complete. One of the things we've tried to do in this is to also give the city some flexibility into the future. If you'll notice, the last column says balance of capital reserve and there's a four million dollar number at the bottom of that. So when you get done with all the debt servicing, you get done financing, paying for all these projects, you still have some balance in that capital reserve. I don't suspect I'll be around to see it, but it should be there. The other thing is that on this particular piece of debt, which goes out to two thousand thirty-four, all of the maturities from two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty-four are callable at the option of the city. So that if at some point in the future, interest rates were actually lower than what they are today and you could refinance those final maturities and save more money, you have the option of being able to do that. Again, that'll happen in two thousand twenty-five and whether I'm here to be the guy that does the refinancing is questionable. But nonetheless, the options are there for the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone.
Just a comment and I guess a question too. I mean, it's fairly obvious that one of the reasons we're getting a good interest rate is because we're doing business the way it should be done and.
Correct.
Managing our, what we take in and managing what we put out.
Absolutely. Moody's, we've gone through all of this with Moody's, we've gone through all the tax increment district financing with Moody's. They have continually affirmed the double A two rating, which is a high rating. They understand the plan, they understand what we're doing. They have taken recognition in their credit reports that this debt is not tax levy supported, that the city has a history of successful tax increment district financings. So looking at the history and moving forward, the outside agencies, credit agencies, have viewed the city as responsibly operated and managed.
Thanks. Other questions? All right, now I just, oh, Alderman Gail popped up.
Yeah, just sorry, Paul and Jerry and Bridget and the rest of the staff, just kudos for you folks in terms of actually floating this debt at the prices we have done. Obviously, your assistance and professionalism in that matters very well appreciated. Jerry and Bridget and the rest of the staff that have actually undertaken this immense, from our standpoint, the city's standpoint, investment project, projects and plan over the past years and actually brought it in better than planned and what will be, I think, a testament to the city moving forward in terms of its stuteness in investing its money. I think it deserves, you know, kudos to everyone involved that it really has been done and we appreciate the effort involved.
Thank you. I think it should also be recognized that the council also has exercised some courage, if you will, to take on these kinds of projects and have the ability to move forward. It's a substantial amount of money that was borrowed over that five-year period and probably not every council would step up and do that. So that is also reflective.
And just for the public, it's not just this council, it's previous councils as well and other aldermen that have served. There were some bold decisions made a few years ago and I think they're all starting to come to fruition, both at, well, all the developments we just talked about. All right, motion and a second needed.
Gail, we'll move to approve resolution number one one five eight zero dash zero one zero six one five, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of twenty million five hundred thousand general obligation refunding bonds.
Should that be?
We have to change the language to reflect nineteen million six hundred and fifty thousand.
So noted, series twenty thousand fifteen A.
Kuzakowski, Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
All right, item ten is a resolution number one one five eight one dash zero one zero six one five, approving the second amendment to the access agreement between Beazer East Incorporated, known as Beazer, and the city of Oak Creek in the fourth district.
I can handle it.
City attorney Haskins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Canal Properties at ninety-one hundred South Fifth, Canal and Beazer, the former owner of the property, are undergoing a site investigation and remediation plan under the supervision of the EPA and DNR. As part of that, now that we're the owners of the former Dupont property, they're looking to get access to our property to determine whether or not there's any impacts from their operations on the Dupont property. And although the Dupont property underwent an extensive environmental investigation as part of the VPLE program, this is another safety net to determine whether or not there's any impacts from the Canal property. So we certainly want to allow this access. They're aware of the barrier maintenance plan that has to be followed and so we're recommending approval.
Questions for city attorney? Alderman Gail?
Sorry, Larry, just to clarify, this one and the earlier version, the VPLE designation, I believe, would preclude the city from being liable for anything they would find that they could justify that essentially the Dupont property cost of their damage or the cost of their entity.
Right, right. The city's not going to have any responsibility here. If, with the VPLE program comes a state-issued insurance policy so that if there was any issues, any environmental issues on the city property, we'd be covered either under that state policy or more likely directly covered by Beazer if they could have been found causally responsible for that.
Yeah, I'd be worried about the reverse, but, but yeah, so as long as that's clarified, the VPLE program covers our risk.
Yep.
I'm fine.
Good point of clarification. Alderman Toman?
That was my question, thank you.
All right, Alderman Kuzakowski?
Will that have any impact on, or any delay on any work being done or potentially starting next year?
It should, I mean, it has nothing to do with the park area because that's the passive recreation area. This is the western half of the Dupont property and part of the access agreement provides that if there was a development opportunity, that they've got to work with the city to accommodate any future development. It's not likely that we're going to, we're going to see a development occurring in two thousand fifteen on that property. You know, somebody has to buy the property, go through the approval process, so it's not likely that that would happen. But if that did happen, that's provided for in the access agreement.
Because we were, weren't we thinking, one of the first phases, the road going through, would that impact the road at all?
No, has nothing to do with the road.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
Toman will make a motion to adopt resolution number one one five eight one, resolution approving the second amendment to the access agreement buy-in between Beazer East, Inc. and the city of Oak Creek.
Gail, we'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Item eleven is a motion to approve and provide eligible employees the option to participate in the Federal Pension Protection Act of two thousand six. City administrator?
This was a discussion that we had with our police department employees as part of our contract negotiations.[1777.83]
Here now, we're looking 2016 to 2017.
Any idea what the issue is?
We have some suspicions as to one particular person that is asking lots of questions of just about anybody that will hear them.
Without identifying the person, is it your opinion as an engineer that there's any foundation in any of the things they're bringing up?
I would say very little.
All right. City Administrator had a question or a comment.
Just one point to put this in context. The council will recall that it allocated $7 million to roadway projects for the Lake Vista Parkway project. This is part of that project. So the city required match of this is funded as part of that $7 million for this roadway extension and then for the Lake Vista Boulevard project. So they're all tied in. As Mike pointed out, 2.7 million dollars in a grant that we fought very hard for helps extend local tax dollars significantly on this important access to the lakefront project.
And just personally, to have one person delay a project for what I think is for the list reasons is extremely upsetting. It's going to be another year that people can't get out there. So anyway, I'll let it go.
Yeah, there'll be access to the lakefront because the Lake Vista Drive Road will be in.
An easier access, let's put it that way. Alderman Gale.
Just another example of, you know, the incredible effort staff has put forward. I mean, residents don't realize, $2.8 million basically given to the city to further its economic development and redevelopment opportunities. I mean, that's an incredible amount of money. Staff, incredible effort, the multi-jurisdictional cooperation here. So we have a lot of thanks and kudos out to other entities in the metropolitan area to make sure we are aligned for this. So that's a great outcome. And Jerry, in terms of the Fonzie thing, if we need to get local and state legislators involved here, I think we need to do what we need to do to move that project along.
I think we're really pushing the issue now. We had not known until, we have quarterly meetings with the Department of Transportation. They just follow up on our behalf, and we identified where the issues were coming from. We don't believe, again, there's technical issues or wetland issues. We think it's someone asking unfounded questions and making unfounded.
We need to find an advocate at the national level.
Yeah, we're working through that right now. We'll do that.
All right. Any other questions? Motion.
Go ahead. Okay. Toman will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11582, a resolution approving the state municipal agreement for the state let STP local road project, the Fifth Avenue relocation project from Chicago Road to Ryan Road.
Goozakowski, second.
Goozakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Toman will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11582, a resolution approving the state municipal agreement for the state let STP local road project, the Fifth Avenue relocation project from Chicago Road to Ryan Road.
Goozakowski, second.
Goozakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye. Just a note, Mayor, Jerry, too, as well, if we have not trumpeted this outcome already, we should, you know, social media, press release, I think it's a significant outcome for the city and echoes and re-echoes more of what we're doing, so.
Okay. If you want to provide the details to the staff, we can certainly get that out. All right, moving to 14. It's a motion to concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission recommendations as follows. Do I need to read all these?
No.
Okay. There's A, B, C, D, and E. Do I have to act independently on each one?
Well, we'd have to take them separately if there's differing actions on each individual item. If there's blanket approvals, somebody can make a motion to approve or to approve or deny as indicated in the report.
All right. Who's on the?
I am.
All right. Why don't you handle? Let's take them one at a time.
Okay.
Ritz will make a motion to concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission recommendations as follows. A, relocation of no parking anytime signs on West Pilgrim Parkway from South 13th Street to South Rosewood Trail.
Any?
No, it says "and." Larry?
They all say "and."
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, Jim, if you believe that you're going to get support on A through E, you can make a motion to approve.
Hold on one second. Are you acting as a resident?
I am.
Okay. So do you know which one you're?
I am.
Okay. Let's take them individually.
Okay. So I'll stop.
Here's what I'll do. You'll read it. I'll ask if there's any questions up here on that item, and then if not, we'll make a motion.
Okay.
So you read A?
So I read A.
All right. Anyone have questions or comments? Need a motion and a second.
Gale, second.
You made a motion. Gale, second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Item B, Jim.
Installation, Ritz will motion to concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission recommendations for installation of an equestrian warning signs with distance plaque on West Elm Street, Elm Road, west of seeing northwestern railroad tracks, east to 500 feet east of Oak Leaf Trail.
Any questions? Somebody second.
Second.
We need a second.
Gale, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Now. Go ahead and read it, and then we'll. Actually, let's have the comments first. This has to do with a no parking anytime sign on South Emerald Meadows Drive.
Hi, good evening. I'm Erin Haring. 10552 South Emerald Meadows, referenced in Letter C. We, my husband and I had some comments to deliver as we weren't notified about the committee until after. We agree that the traffic on Emerald Meadows is very fun during parent pickup time for Deerfield Elementary, but we don't think the two signs right in front of the mailbox and after the mailbox are going to solve that issue. One, we feel it's redundant. It is illegal, or at least we believe it is, to park in front of a mailbox. So this is an enforcement issue rather than putting up another sign. The other thing is it's not consistent with what we're seeing in other neighborhoods. So even in the packet that I was sent today, there's different handling of no parking or no parking during these times or where it is. You don't see it in front of two mailboxes. And then I don't think that there, I've seen the procession that they have. They're not parking. They're in a procession to go to the schools, so I don't even think that those people would think that they're parking. And then if we are going to do that, they're also blocking the intersection and driveways. So you would have to put signs up in front of every intersection and sideways. So we are saying, please don't put two signs in our front yard.
Is your home one of the two?
Yes, 10552.
Do we know if the neighbor is the one that?
No, it's the Oak Creek Post Office.
She's very upset about it. She's told us that our mail service has been disrupted twice, which we're fine with. twice, which we're fine with. It was actually, we had more issues before all the cars were happening and we had some stolen mail and stuff. So we're, we're fine with not getting our coupons.
Were you at the discussion of this?
I was not.
All right. Let's hold. Can we hold C?
Sure.
All right. Let's hold C.
Okay.
Thanks for your comments. And we'll make sure, someone make sure that they are invited to that next. Go ahead.
Uh, just our policy is to notify all the, the residents in, in the vicinity of the, um, of the issue. And so you should have gotten a mailing.
We got it, the, we got it the night after the, the meeting happened.
I'm not arguing about the policy. I'm actually, I'd like them to appear before Traffic and Safety and make their arguments. And you might want to recruit your neighbor as well to make, make the argument.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to D.
Ritz will motion to, uh, concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission's recommendations for installation of a no parking between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM during, uh, school days. Signs on East Carleton Drive, south of, uh, ROW, uh, row in front of Carleton Elementary School.
Gusekowski will second. Right of way, James.
Right of way, thank you.
Gusekowski second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Any?
Finally, Ritz will make a motion to concur with the Traffic and Safety Commission's recommendations for denying the installation of no parking anytime signs on West Apple Creek Drive from West Jonathan Drive to West Pitts Road and on West Hanadell Drive from South 27th Street to 185 feet west of South Portland Drive.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to information and technology. Item 15 is a motion to approve a purchase of one unit trans server appliance from CDWG Inc. in the amount of $13,925. And our IT Director Caesar is here to answer any questions.
Basically, the first device is, um, a backup server which backs up all our other servers and the data on them. And if one of the servers goes down, it will regenerate the server on that device so that that server will be active until we can restore that server. I waited until the end of the year. I got a deal because they're trying to close them out at the end of 2014. So we got the next, uh, bigger server for the price of the smaller server. And I was able to get them to throw in the installation of $1,600 as well if we would purchase it.
Nice.
So we, we had a little savings. It is on state contract. Uh, so it is a, it is a situation we have to bid separately.
All right. Alderman Bukavich?
Caesar, if this server's going to be used in City Hall, will it be transferable to the new site?
It actually, it's a device. Yeah, it is a server. It actually, we're going to install it now at the police department.
Oh, it'll be at the police department.
And then it will go to the city hall.
Eventually. Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else?
Caesar, this came through CIP budgeting or?
Uh, it's just, we have, uh, money budgeted in CIP each year for.
Various, various.
Like that. And this was listed as one of the items that I was going to purchase in 14.
Okay.
Okay. Motion.
Gale moves to approve purchase of one unit trans server slash appliance from CDWG Inc. in the amount of $13,925.
Gusekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Item 16 is a motion to approve the purchase of Cisco network switches, GBICs, cables, and ISE software hardware from Core BTS Inc. in the amount of $177,361.94. Caesar?
This, this is another kind of interesting story. These switches, uh, with the construction of our fiber network will be used to connect all of our buildings. Uh, we'll hang these switches on the end of the fiber network. So it, it's in conjunction with that project. It also is in conjunction with, when, when we get our new VoIP phone system, it needs power over Ethernet, which is plugging into a wall or anything like that, the phones will get their power from the switches that they're deriving from. And so basically what this means is we have to replace our entire switching structure in the city in all of our buildings. So this is to replace every switch that we have and also our routers as well. Our Cisco routers and our switches. I haven't bought any in the last several years knowing that we are going to end up having to do this. Uh, I did, Cisco pricing is normally much more expensive, but because, um, we got pricing from other manufacturers, uh, I went back to Cisco and I said, if you want to be competitive, you're going to have to do better than state pricing. And to keep us is, as a Cisco city, they dropped the price about $100,000 in the, in the bid just to, just to keep us online.
Good bargaining.
So it's, it's a good price. It's state contract minus $100,000.
All right. Any questions?
Same question that Ken had before, I'm sorry. Same question that Ken had before. Obviously, this was pre-budgeted or?
This, this has been budgeted in three different areas. It was budgeted in our fiber project, which Ellis there. It was budgeted in the new city hall, library, and fire station.
That's right.
And this is also includes all the equipment we will need in those new buildings as well. And it was also budgeted in my CIP items. I knew that we'd have to pick some of it up. So it's, it's, it's allocated from three different funds, but it's all been planned and we knew that we were going to expand those funds.
And, and we're under budget then?
Well, we're, we're close to approximately where I figured we would be.
Okay.
We're not under budget per se, but we're close to where we figured.
Alderman Bukavich?
Caesar, you answered most of it. It was budgeted for the new facilities. We're putting in fire department and city hall. When do you plan to install this? After city hall is, is up and running?
Well, actually.
And the fire department? So we're not being redundant doing it here and then moving it?
Uh, actually, the, what we will be doing is doing in stages. We're going to start with putting, uh, several of the switches in the police department within this month or so. Then when our VoIP, our, our new phone system comes in, we will put it in, we'll finish the police department building and we will start putting it into the auxiliary buildings like the street department, fire station two. And then when fire station one is completed, we'll put a switch in there, the new switches. And we will finally, when city hall and library are ready, we'll put the switches, the new switches in.
Okay.
So it will be staged.
So you'll be able to operate here?
Yes.
Kind of on a dual system?
We are not going to replace the switches here. We're going to continue to use the ones we have here, uh, because we're not going to put the new phones in here. Uh, we won't put the new phones in the city hall library until the new building is ready for them. We'll put the, the new switches and the new phones in there. But the, the new phones, we will put in the police department and fire station two and streets earlier. So we won't be moving the switching.
I guess that's why I'm asking, just so we ain't doing it.
This also gives us the opportunity to keep the old city hall and library buildings hot until, because we'll be putting the new equipment in there. And so we'll be able to have them both hot at the same time, you know, without having to move the equipment.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion?
Gale moves to approve the purchase of Cisco network switches, GBICs, cables, and ISE software slash hardware from Core BTS Inc. in the amount of $177,361.94.
Gusekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Licensing.
Uh, the licensing committee did not meet prior to tonight's meeting. However, tentative reclamation are being made as follows. Ritz will, uh, motion to grant an operator's license to the following individuals. Uh, favorable background reports have been received.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2014-15 Class A combination license to Cynthia S. Smith, agent for Walgreens, doing business with Walgreens, number 048879449, South Hall Avenue, also having received a favorable background report.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a secondhand article dealer license to Richard Radke, agent, Oak Creek Currency and Coin, 616 East Ryan Road. Subject to payment of personal property taxes. Favorable background report was received.
Gale seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Finally, Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2015 mobile home park license to the following individuals, subject to payment of personal property taxes. Both have received favorable background reports.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
All right. Now, if I saw the communication correctly from the city attorney, we have to move item 24 into open session. Is that everyone's understanding? So we're going to move to item 24, which is a consideration of ordinance number 2746, confirming the adoption of the settlement agreement between the City of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Professional Police Officers Association and fixing the salary for members of the association from January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2017.
I'll, um, kind of describe where we're at and then look for comments from, uh, the Chair of the Personnel Committee. And we also have, uh, Rob Yukima here, who's our Labor Attorney, uh, who will also probably make some comments. Uh, so we have, um, had negotiations, uh, five sessions with the police department. Uh, last session was in mediation. We, uh, had had some difficulty reaching agreement on, uh, all of the key issues. I'm happy to say that through that mediation process, we did get, uh, to a tentative agreement at the table. Um, that agreement has subsequently been ratified by the, uh, police, uh, union, uh, and requires now counsel consideration. That's a normal process that we have. Um, the highlights of the agreement, uh, or, or the main points of the agreement, it's a three-year agreement. Uh, it's for 2015 through 2017. Uh, in terms of, uh, the wages in the agreement, uh, there are 2%, 2% and 1.5%. Um, there's also a significant change in terms of retiree health insurance, uh, inasmuch as new employees who are hired beginning January 1, 15, uh, will receive no post-retirement health insurance. Instead, uh, the city will, uh, pay into a VIBA account on our normal bi-weekly, um, payroll basis between $50 and $100 per paycheck that would, uh, and could be used by them for, uh, post-retirement health insurance. Um, it's the city's intention, it's the staff's intention, and also the, uh, Personnel Committee that we actually fund those obligations and put those into a trust fund early on in those employees' career, basically taking the differential between a top-of-the-range patrolman, which is currently about $72,000 a year. And when we, uh, bring a new patrol officer in, they're coming in at about $49,000. So we would fund into a trust fund those payments, basically have no unfunded liability. That is a very significant issue. Quite frankly, that was the sticking point in the negotiations. And I think we worked through that to a, uh, to a reasonable settlement. Uh, you have in the report that we provided, some of the other, uh, contract cleanup, some of this was language that's, uh, uh, holdover from some of the Public Act 10 and 32 uncertainty that we had in the current contract. We had, uh, a lot of that legislation has, or a lot of those issues have been settled. We've cleaned up some of that language and some things that we did as part of the last contract. Uh, we worked through, I think, issues, um, in a, um, in a collegial way. Um, and, uh, I think that's probably the, uh, the highlights of the agreement. Certainly, Rob may have some comments. I think maybe, Rob, maybe you make those. And then certainly anybody from the committee, uh, who wants to make additional comments. I think the one area that I, I hadn't highlighted, we talked a lot about a gun allowance, putting that as part of the wage package. That was a real sticking point with those folks. We think we, uh, came up with a pretty good agreement where we note that on the wage scale. Specifically, it's asterisk on the wage schedule that that is a wage. Uh, it's not a gun allowance, it's a wage. It's recognized as that, uh, in, over and above, uh, what we're doing now. So we think that that, again, was a, a, a good compromise on the part of our team as well as the, um, police negotiating team. And I think it properly reflects, I think, what our intention was to show that it, what it, what it really is.
Welcome, Rob.
Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, I, this was very well explained. I'll just highlight a couple of things because I know you've been here a long time. But the result of any good, um, mediated settlement is that neither party gets everything that they want. And, um, that's true in this situation. I guess I would say that, um, listening to your agenda tonight, there's lots of significant kind of big things that are going on in the city. And negotiations are right along with that. This is not a run-of-the-mill negotiations. In fact, every time we bargain now, something significant happens. Last time, it was the post-65. And now this year was the, the retiree benefits. And it's not something that the city takes lightly. And it's obviously something that has to be bilateral. You have to be able to get an agreement with the union on this. And, you know, the sticking point was they, they really didn't want to talk about this. But then, when we were in mediation, they put together a proposal. And frankly, um, you know, it was a proposal where we had to pay, you know, really strong money to be able to buy this benefit out. And that's just a reality. But on the other hand, if we, if the city does what it, it said it's going to do, and that is take the savings between a new hire and an experienced officer, put that money away and, and invest it, then this is going to be a very responsible settlement for the city because you'll be able to pay for this settlement. And then when you get to the end of somebody's career, that's what they get. The, the unfunded liability is gone. So this has been a six-year process with, with retiree health. And now you can take a look at, uh, some of the other priorities that you have. So it, it's, it's definitely a situation where you have to get, give something to get something. But I think in the end, um, it's very fair. And, um, I think it's a, it's a good settlement for both parties.
Any comments from the Personnel Committee?
Just to piggyback on what Rob just said and, and what Jerry said also, uh, it, it's always best to get the voluntary settlement. There's, there's no doubt about it. He, you know, when I walked into mediation, I, I would have bet you, I would have given you 10 to 1 odds that we were going to go to arbitration. And it didn't happen. We settled it at the mediation level, which was huge. It was an all-day session. But, uh, we, we addressed some of the big issues. We, we didn't get to the, the gun allowance we fought for for a long time. That's 2% on top of, uh, the wages for the, for the PD. Uh, we didn't get that, but we, we got the, uh, acknowledgement that it is part of, of their wages. They admitted it. Um, the, uh, the schedule on this, on this addressing OPEB liability on the contributions, I think we should note that we, uh, they don't get a contribution the first year probationary, right?
That's right.
That's, okay. So they have to be here a year. The, this is for new hires. And, uh, it's, is it 50 to the third?
50 to the second year.
Second and 100 to third.
75.
75 and then 100. Okay. All right. So it's a graduated scale. And it, that, that is huge in the end because if you do the math, the, uh, the average retirement age for, for the members of the PD is right around 52. And in the past, we had to address full medical coverage up to that gap of 65 where Medicare kicks in. That's no longer there. So if you do the math, it's a big plus for the city. And we had to fight for that and we got it. So thanks to the members of the committee that, that supported the, uh, our position on this. That's it. Thank you.
And I'd also say it was data-driven from the beginning. The Personnel Committee is very strong and, uh, very prepared. And the council had, gave good direction. We were communicating with the council throughout. So I think it was a good, good game plan.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Need a motion on 24.
Someone will make a motion to, uh, for the council to ratify and approve the provisions of a new contract with Oak Creek PD, uh, Officers Association for years 2015, 2016, and 2017, and approve ordinance number 24, 2746 attached.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Item 21 is a motion to convene into closed session immediately following the conclusion of the Common Council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss A, Section 19.851E, to consider proposed tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement, buy-in between the City of Oak Creek and HSA Commercial Real Estate known as Drexel Town Square in the Second District. Common Council President?
Gale moves to convene into closed session immediately following the conclusion of the Common Council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes, A, to, uh, Section 19.85 Sub 1, Sub E, to consider a proposed tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement, buy-in between the City of Oak Creek and HSA Commercial Real Estate.
Toman seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Gusekowski.
Aye.
Bukavich.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
We'll now go into closed session. We'll turn the cameras off. We will turn them back on when we come back into open session.
Gale moves to reconvene in open session. Toman will second.